Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the November 12, 2025 meeting of the Carrboro Town Council. This is a work session about the development of our Unified Development Ordinance. There will be no formal action or public comment in this meeting this evening. And before we turn it over to our consultant, I do want to take the opportunity to congratulate Mayor Protem Now, Councilmember Palmer, and Councilmember-elect Fred Joyner, and me, you know, as we were victorious on last Tuesday night, and, you know, just really want to thank the Carrboro community that voted us to come back and sit in these seats of governance. And so I did want to just briefly say that. And of course, you know, we'll talk more at the swearing-in next month. Chad, do you want to kick us off? Do you have?
Yes, ma'am. Are we ready?
Yeah, I think we are. We did spend a good bit of time in our last work session with you last month. The impression that I got from council members is they feel that we are on the right track and that things are going well. But we also decided that a second work session will probably, will probably be in order. Maybe you have more information to share, which is good. I know one thing for me, council members, if you don't mind, our downtown area plan, as you know, is in a draft form right now. We'll be in a public hearing next week. And so one thing that I have been thinking about is how our Unified Development Ordinance could impact the downtown area plan. We know the downtown area plan is a guide for the future. Our UDO is, you know, it's kind of like the law of development or redevelopment. And so if you could provide some comments, there's some connection there. And just wanted to go ahead and make that connection tonight ahead of next week, because the UDO will definitely impact anything that happens in our downtown in the future, council members, if that's okay, you know, just get that information from him. And I'll just turn it over to you, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's a pleasure to be back before you guys. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to come back and have more conversation with you. We have some more questions to drill down on, some more things to cover. And I'm here to answer questions or concerns, you know, that you guys have. So last time, you received the 80-page, 80-page summary of the current LDO with the implementation ideas for the new UDO included within it. I don't know if I mentioned the last time I was here, and this is relevant to the downtown plan. We have put together this document, which is called the Land Use Policy Summary, and it's dated February of this year. And it goes in great detail into Carrboro Connects, the 60 or so percent of the policies that are in the comprehensive plan, and how we might go about implementing those. One thing that's noticeably absent from this land use policy analysis is your downtown plan. And the reason for that is it's not adopted yet. Certainly, you are absolutely right, Madam Mayor, that the UDO is the foundation. It's, it adopts and creates the rules for your, for your downtown plan. And I don't have tonight a lot of detail about what implementation aspects we would include. What I will do is, as soon as the town has adopted the plan, we will supplement this document, the policy guidance summary, with a new table that incorporates all of the relevant aspects of the downtown plan that the UDO needs to address. I will say, right now, there's a couple zoning districts for the downtown area, and the dimensional standards in those districts are very complicated to follow. There are a variety of different sort of instances and caveats that come with what's next to you, or what's across the street, or what kind of road you're on, and all sorts of things that make it complicated. Generally speaking, generally speaking, most local governments these days, when thinking about their downtown, or their town center, or whatever, you know, whatever they choose to call it, the objective for the development standards is to remove obstacles, is to lift, you know, limitations on development, whether those are procedural or substantive in nature. So we might decide, you know, again, depending upon what is in the plan, we might decide to simplify some of the regulations. Maybe there's a single district, or we contemplate how we do zoning districts in downtown. That is a possibility. There are obviously a lot of room and options for incentives. I know that we're talking about some taller buildings. I know that we're talking about some increased density. I know that there's concern about compatibility and making sure that, you know, we don't create new development that, you know, has negative impact on some of the most sensitive areas in town, and how we handle all of that stuff. The other thing to be mindful of, you know, is the downzoning bill. And what it does and doesn't allow us to do anymore in terms of changes, reductions in density, I don't think that will be an issue for us, reductions in the range of uses, that might potentially be an area of concern. We can certainly broaden the array of uses, and that's not a problem. The creation of nonconformities in nonresidential zoning districts will absolutely be something that we have to pay very close attention to. And, you know, if we have time tonight, after we've gone through some of this other material, if you'd like to talk about the strategy for, you know, what we would suggest be done to deal with the downzoning bill, I'm happy to talk about that. But I don't, I don't know, you know, how much time you've got, and whether or not you really want to go into that conversation now. It's, it's, we're certainly ready to talk about it. It is a very nuanced discussion. And I'm anxious to hear y'all's sort of reactions to what to our strategy. But, you know, maybe tonight is the night, and maybe, maybe we can cover that in the coming weeks, and that's okay. It's not going to make much difference, whether we do it tonight, or in a couple of weeks, or a month.
Okay. And just one second. Councilmember Posada Roscoe's joined us virtually. So he is with us. And Councilmember-elect Fred Joyner is also joining us here in the council chamber. He's over by the door. Welcome. Councilmembers, where do we want to begin? Are there questions? Chad, did you have more? Or did I cut you off?
I, no, ma'am, you did not. I was going to give you just the quick overview of what we went through last time. Staff has given you a series of worksheets that we would like to use to organize the discussion. That said, if you guys have questions, by all means, let's jump into those. And we can do those first, or we can do them as part of the worksheets.
So you mentioned the downzoning. So I, councilmembers, I was thinking maybe in the future? What are you, what are you, any comments or anything about that in particular? Councilmember Fred, go ahead if you have something.
It's been on my list to ask about advice for strategy around that. Right? This is...
Councilmember Fred, sorry to interrupt, but could you keep closer to the mic? I could...
Absolutely. Councilmember Posada Roscoe, thank you. So it's been on my list of questions to understand better how we respond to a law that doesn't really contemplate how ordinances actually change. That makes it a little challenging for us. So that's definitely something I want to talk about. I don't know that there's any particular reason to do it tonight. I'm interested in making sure we get through this material. If we have extra time, great, or in a couple of weeks is fine as well.
Okay. Thank you so much. Have you been working on any strategies? Or have any ideas about that in particular, as of your...
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. There are, there are approximately 20 local governments across the state who are contemplating some kind of new set of development regulations. Happily, they're not all my clients, though I have many, who are in this sort of holding pattern, as we sort of try to figure out how to adapt to this law. That is very difficult. And yes, we could certainly cover this at a future, a future time. I will say, last long session, there were 22 bills that sought exemption locally, that affected around 100 local governments. None, save one, were adopted by the General Assembly. Mills River was the one community who was actually exempted from the downzoning bill. And that exemption was for a very short duration. It allows them to finish and adopt their Unified Development Ordinance that they are working on. July 1 of 2026, Mills River will become subject to the downzoning bill. So that is a strange instance where we are drafting a zoning ordinance as though it did not exist, yet trying to be cognizant of the fact that it's going to, it's going to apply on the day that they adopt the zoning ordinance. So that's kind of a, it's a little mind blowing to get your head around. And this is a complex, complex subject. Suffice it to say, there are still a lot of local governments who are contemplating seeking exemption. And y'all need to make the decision that's right for you. I will say that I do expect at least five local governments in the short session to request exemption bills. We will probably see those exemption bills take on a similar complexion to the Mills River request, which was a short-term duration that allows you to get your development ordinance adopted. And then you would become subject to it. And that's very, very helpful, because the bill, as you know, no longer permits local governments to lower densities without consent, to reduce the range of allowable uses in a particular zoning district, an existing zoning district, without consent. And you cannot adopt any development regulation that would render or create a nonconforming situation for existing development in a nonresidential zoning district. And a very sort of sticky sort of wicket of things to work through. Interestingly, we can create nonconformities for existing uses in residential zoning districts. So the new UDO could have new multifamily design standards, or new development standards that we apply to apartments. Things like that are allowable. But that kind of an approach to a nonresidential zoning district, we would have to get consent first. And so, yes, we have a strategy to put forth on the table. There's a couple of different sort of...
I have put together this document, which is called the Land Use Policy Summary, and it's dated February of this year. And it goes in great detail into Carver Connects, the 60 or so percent of the policies that are in the comprehensive plan, and how we might go about implementing those. One thing that's noticeably absent from this land use policy analysis is your downtown plan, and the reason for that is it's not adopted yet. Certainly, you are absolutely right, Madam Mayor, that the U D O is the foundation. It adopts and creates the rules for your downtown plan. And I don't have tonight a lot of detail about what implementation aspects we would include. What I will do is, as soon as the town has adopted the plan, we will supplement this document, the Policy Guidance Summary, with a new table that incorporates all of the relevant aspects of the downtown plan that the U D O needs to address. I will say, right now, there's a couple zoning districts for the downtown area, and the dimensional standards in those districts are very complicated to follow. There are a variety of different sort of instances and caveats that come with what's next to you, or what's across the street, or what kind of road you're on, and all sorts of things that make it complicated. Generally speaking, generally speaking, most local governments these days, when thinking about their downtown, or their town center, or whatever they choose to call it, the objective for the development standards is to remove obstacles, is to lift limitations on development, whether those are procedural or substantive in nature. So, we might decide, again, depending upon what is in the plan, we might decide to simplify some of the regulations. Maybe there's a single district, or we contemplate how we do zoning districts in downtown. That is a possibility. There are obviously a lot of room and options for incentives. I know that we're talking about some taller buildings. I know that we're talking about some increased density. I know that there's concern about compatibility and making sure that we don't create new development that has negative impact on some of the most sensitive areas in town, and how we handle all of that stuff. The other thing to be mindful of is the downzoning bill. And what it does and doesn't allow us to do anymore, in terms of changes, reductions in density, I don't think that'll be an issue for us, reductions in the range of uses, that might potentially be an area of concern. We can certainly broaden the array of uses, and that's not a problem. The creation of nonconformities in nonresidential zoning districts will absolutely be something that we have to pay very close attention to. And if we have time tonight, after we've gone through some of this other material, if you'd like to talk about the strategy for what we would suggest be done to deal with the downzoning bill, I'm happy to talk about that. But I don't know how much time you've got, and whether or not you really want to go into that conversation now. We're certainly ready to talk about it. It is a very nuanced discussion, and I'm anxious to hear y'all's reactions to our strategy. But maybe tonight is the night, and maybe we can cover that in the coming weeks, and that's okay. It's not going to make much difference whether we do it tonight, or in a couple of weeks or a month.
Okay. And just one second. Councilmember Posada Orozco has joined us virtually, so he is with us, and Councilmember like Fred Joyner is also joining us here in the council chamber. He's over by the door. Councilmembers, where do we want to begin? Are there questions? Chad, did you have more? Or did I cut you off?
No, ma'am, you did not. I was going to give you just the quick overview of what we went through last time. Staff has given you a series of worksheets that we would like to use to organize the discussion. That said, if you guys have questions, by all means, let's jump into those, and we can do those first, or we can do them as part of the worksheets.
So you mentioned the downzoning. So, councilmembers, I was thinking maybe in the future? What are you, any comments or anything about that in particular? Councilmember Fred, go ahead if you have something.
It's been on my list to ask about advice for strategy around that. This is...
Councilmember Fred, sorry to interrupt, but could you keep closer to the mic? I could...
Absolutely. Councilmember Posada Orozco, thank you. So, it's been on my list of questions to understand better how we respond to a law that doesn't really contemplate how ordinances actually change. That makes it a little challenging for us. So, that's definitely something I want to talk about. I don't know that there's any particular reason to do it tonight. I'm interested in making sure we get through this material. If we have extra time, great, or in a couple of weeks is fine as well.
Okay. Thank you so much. Have you been working on any strategies, or have any ideas about that in particular?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. There are approximately 20 local governments across the state who are contemplating some kind of new set of development regulations. Happily, they're not all my clients, though I have many, who are in this sort of holding pattern, as we sort of try to figure out how to adapt to this law. That is very difficult. And yes, we could certainly cover this at a future time. I will say, last long session, there were 22 bills that sought exemption locally, that affected around 100 local governments. None, save one, were adopted by the General Assembly. Mills River was the one community who was actually exempted from the downzoning bill, and that exemption was for a very short duration. It allows them to finish and adopt their unified development ordinance that they are working on. July 1 of 2026, Mills River will become subject to the downzoning bill. So, that is a strange instance where we are drafting a zoning ordinance as though it did not exist, yet trying to be cognizant of the fact that it's going to apply on the day that they adopt the zoning ordinance. So, that's kind of a, it's a little mind-blowing to get your head around, and this is a complex subject. Suffice it to say, there are still a lot of local governments who are contemplating seeking exemption, and y'all need to make the decision that's right for you. I will say that I do expect at least five local governments in the short session to request exemption bills. We will probably see those exemption bills take on a similar complexion to the Mills River request, which was a short-term duration that allows you to get your development ordinance adopted, and then you would become subject to it. And that's very, very helpful, because the bill, as you know, no longer permits local governments to lower densities without consent, to reduce the range of allowable uses in a particular zoning district, an existing zoning district, without consent. And you cannot adopt any development regulation that would render or create a nonconforming situation for existing development in a nonresidential zoning district, and a very sort of sticky sort of wicket of things to work through. Interestingly, we can create nonconformities for existing uses in residential zoning districts. So, the new U D O could have new multifamily design standards, or new development standards that we apply to apartments. Things like that are allowable, but that kind of an approach to a nonresidential zoning district, we would have to get consent first. And so, yes, we have a strategy to put forth on the table. There's a couple of different sort of aspects to the strategy, not least of which is, one, basically abolishing all existing nonconformities and recognizing everybody who exists as a conforming use, and then changing drastically the definition of what we call new development, to include any sort of minor alteration or expansion of existing development, which would allow us to apply the standards that we wrote to so-called new development. So, it requires a much more expansive definition of what is new, and it requires us to abolish existing nonconformities, and some local governments are even going as far as amnesty for existing unlawful development, simply as a practical matter, because they can't track, don't have the ability to track, who was nonconforming, who was lawful, and with the loss of nonconformity, or the murkiness of whether or not you could be considered nonconforming or not if you were unlawful, but you didn't grant consent. These are questions that we're dealing with. I suspect most local governments will grant amnesty, abolish nonconformities, expand their definition of new development to include more things, and then go forward writing the kinds of standards that they would write otherwise. The other two things that are nonnegotiable for us, that I don't think you guys would necessarily change drastically in any case, is the reduction in the range of use types, generally, and the reduction in densities. Those things we probably need to cope with and deal with. That doesn't mean we can't write new zoning districts. We can. I really think you guys are already kind of well into the conditional rezoning mechanism, that procedure. Most local governments across the state who are not using conditional zoning will be moving to it. I would anticipate conventional zoning to largely disappear, because once you've zoned something, you can't really change it anymore without consent. So, those are some of the kind of rough contours of the strategy, and I'm happy to talk more about it either tonight or at some point in the future.
Same.
Yeah.
What you just said. Yeah.
Hope...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hopefully, we won't see worse legislation. There are still open bills, as you know, 765, 622, and a handful of others, that are much, much more concerning than session law 2024-57, the downzoning bill. And those other concerning bills, for the most part, are still in play.
Thanks for that update. Councilmembers, any questions for Chad? Comments about what he has shared? Direction?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really quick for my clarifying questions, can you give me the names of the bills again, please?
765 and 622 are the ones that, they probably won't go forward under those numbers in the short session. They'll probably be picked up and introduced in new legislation. That's typically what happens. That said, the General Assembly, as you know, is still in session. They are doing these continuing resolutions to stay in session, and they'll be in session into mid-December. And there's rules for what they can bring forward and vote on at that time. And so, it's really hard to know what to expect.
Yeah. And if this made it past crossover, or not, they can just cut and switch any other bill that already exists.
That is correct. The so-called zombie bill, yes.
Yep. Okay. And also, thank you for the information, the document that was shared out was really helpful. I just had to clarify any questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Posada Orozco.
Okay. So, last time, we talked about the five worksheets. You know, I'll refresh your memory. We talked about the eight key themes for improvement of the, on the L D O, simplifying it, we want to safeguard equity, we want to adapt to climate change, address housing choice, integrate policy guidance, increase predictability, ensure legal sufficiency, and incorporate incentives. And those were the eight key themes that we've identified, and each one has a series of five to eight additional sub-recommendations underneath it. We went through a series of five worksheets that posed questions on development review procedures, climate change adaptation, the incentive versus the mandate. We talked about some affordable housing incentives, and preferred options for moving forward, and then we just talked generally about incentives. And I was hoping to clarify some of that information and dig a little deeper into some of those topics, if that's acceptable to you guys. Okay. If it's okay, I'll start with climate change. Okay. So, last time, last time we met, we talked about limiting flooding and stormwater problems, that those were some important aspects that we needed to address. We talked about the notion that, you know, things like energy efficiency, an important strategy for adaptation, but likely less important than maybe addressing flooding, you know, and kind of teasing out a priority of what's really, really important for us. We talked about tree protection, that the town should address tree canopy amount and health, and not just in the development kind of lexicon or rubric, but also just kind of townwide, generally, public property, streets, we should be thinking about tree protection holistically. We wanted to limit invasive species and have a more robust plant list. We wanted to add some incentives for folks who chose to oversize their, either their best management practice or their stormwater control measure. So, you know, let's say you were doing a development, and you had to do a stormwater control measure to treat your runoff. If you would build a larger feature, or more than one feature, that allowed additional stormwater to be treated, whether that was from adjacent properties, or public property, whatever, that there should be incentives for that. So, that was kind of, you know, the areas that we covered. I wanted to kind of point out a couple of things for us as we think about this topic. You know, we really, we have a very fine line to walk when it comes to these environmental rules. So, for example, the General Assembly has limited our riparian buffer maximums to what the state has adopted. Now, town has special authorization, right, to have bigger buffers, which is awesome, and there's absolutely no reason at all to not carry that forward. However, I'm not sure that we could expand our riparian buffer standards from what they are today without additional special authorization. So, what I'm, the point that I'm trying to make is, I believe personally, that what you've got on the books now can and should be carried forward. I don't know, when it comes to the issue of riparian buffers, whether we're going to be able to see them grow in any substantial way, whether that's a deeper width, or more limitations on clearing, or more limitations on what's allowed in them. I think we would have to go back for more special legislation in order to achieve changes in that narrow realm. And, you know, maybe that's something that you would like to do, and if so, great, and if not, then, you know, let's focus on some other aspects. The General Assembly has very specific feelings about tree protection. And essentially, I can sum them up with five simple words, which is, don't do them unless you've got authorization, and that is their view. Personally, and I'm speaking for myself, I believe that tree protection is authorized under the general police power. If you can have a landscaping ordinance, which you can, then you can regulate trees, which you do. And that's done under your health, safety, welfare, protection doctrine. In light of that, I personally believe that we could go forward with more restrictive tree retention provisions, or additional tree retention requirements. We could protect heritage trees and specimen trees. We could retain a percentage of the existing tree canopy. We could limit mass grading as a means of preventing people from clearing all of the trees on a piece of property. We could do reforestation provisions, where if for some reason you do need to reduce the amount of canopy on a site, that steps be taken after construction to reestablish that canopy. It will take time, right, because we would plant smaller trees, and they'll need to grow and mature and so forth. But this reforestation concept is a compromise that's very workable, particularly in urban environments. And then, obviously, there's always the mitigation kind of thing, where somebody might make a payment in lieu, and the town would manage those funds and plant trees on public property or elsewhere, you know, in the community. So, bottom line, we can go forward with tree protection retention standards, above and beyond what you're doing today, but we need to proceed with caution. There may be a desire for the town to take a broader approach to limiting development in the special flood hazard area, the flood plain. Right now, you already do that. There's a lot of limitations in place that don't permit a lot of development in the special flood hazard area. There's discussion about growing that. Maybe we go to the 200, maybe we go to the 500, maybe there's some other limitations that we wish to introduce. Perfectly allowable, can be done, right? I want to be sure that you understand that any changes that we make to your flood damage protection or prevention standards have to go to the North Carolina Department of Public Safety for review, and they will have to authorize and approve whatever changes that we make. So, I just want to be sure that that's understood. After you adopt it, it still has to go for state approval. You already have stormwater standards that are more restrictive necessarily than the state minimum, and that's perfectly fine, totally allowed, and you can continue to do that, and you can continue to strengthen that. So, here's a couple of questions. I wanted to be sure that I mentioned to you that I think, I believe, that if we make some of these climate adaptation changes that we talked about, whether that's tree retention, or additional flood protection, or increased stormwater standards, that is likely to increase the cost of development, and that in turn could work against some of our affordable housing goals. So, my question to the group is, you know, should we approach these climate change provisions as mandates? Should we approach them as incentives? Should we consider waiving some of those mandates, if we decide to have mandates, if people provide preferred development, whether that's affordable housing, or, you know, local business, or, you know, any kind of employment-generating kind of aspect? Where are you guys on this, this incentives versus mandates question on the environmental protection provisions? Again, I'm talking specifically about stormwater, tree protection. I think riparian buffers probably off the table. We should carry forward what you have, but I don't know that we should go necessarily any farther. So, flood, tree, stormwater. Mandates, incentives? Does anybody have any thoughts or feelings?
Right off the top, this strikes me as an area, I think, and we've discussed a couple of different approaches to this question. I think we would probably like to mandate relatively strictly here, and this is, I mean, it's speaking for evaluation in this discussion, of course, with the idea, my concern is cross-cutting incentive structures. My concern is too many incentives for both climate and affordability, difficult to adjudicate, or possibly, possibly in the end, what we end up doing is having developers opt for, you know, climate incentivization that may be less impactful to our bottom-line goals while leaving affordability incentivization. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
So, I think here, it's kind of on us to decide what we can take, because I think with like the incentives and community benefit agreements that we want to think about, we want to prioritize affordability, which is not like to say that I think we should skimp on the climate protections, just that I think that those should be relatively rigid for, if they're not going to be inexpensive to develop, they should be clear, and at least efficient in that sense, and they should not put at risk the incentives that we have in place for affordability. I think that, I mean, I don't know, Chad, if you want to evaluate, is my fear of competing incentives well-founded?
Yes.
Yeah. I thought so.
Yeah.
So, that, to me, is, you know, it strikes me as, I think last time, we talked about a, like a, primarily with some tweaks, reforestation-based approach to tree management, which I like. I don't want personally, like, I think in an ecologically responsible design, canopy is extraordinarily important, carbon retention is extraordinarily important, cooling, water retention, trees rule. But I think we should not take too many lots off the table, you know, like, I hear the appeal of like eliminating mass grading, for instance, that strikes me as pretty tricky and probably not desirable for our goals. So, I think like, what I'm hearing is, like, pretty, pretty heavy reforestation standards with a couple of the, I think there were some time-based tweaks that you had in mind, Chad, that I don't have in front of me, sort of like different points of evaluating compliance with those standards.
So, the reforestation strategy is, so, you know, the comprehensive tree kind of approach here has two or three legs often, and, you know, this is by no means everything that you have to have. It commonly has some incentives for retention of existing vegetation in areas where required landscaping would be located anyway. Okay? So, if I've got a perimeter buffer, or streetscape, or something like that, you know, we might consider allowing existing trees to have accelerated credit towards the landscaping standards. Kind of a no-brainer. It does cut somewhat against a performance standard for a buffer, right? Let's say for the sake of argument that the buffer wants eight trees per 100 feet, and the existing tree is big, as big as eight trees, that 100-foot buffer in this credit system might have a single large mature tree and not have seven more smaller trees, because that one tree gained all the credit that you needed for that 100 feet, if that makes sense. So, that's something to kind of file away in your thinking as we contemplate the credit for existing trees. The reforestation piece is, we want every site to be covered with a percentage of canopy cover, some threshold amount, 10%, 20%, 30%, whatever it is. That's measured in a rough approximation way. We don't want to require somebody to have to do some sort of logarithmic, you know, correlation coefficient of how much of the site has trees. We simply say, be sure that at maturity, this site is 20% covered by tree canopy. Where that 20% is, we don't care. That's what, that's the standard. If, under a reforestation scenario, somebody needs to remove some existing tree cover in order to do an accessway, or build a building, or whatever, then there would be an expectation that a part of that site be set aside, not buildable forever, and be a tree protection area going forward. The amount that they set aside is what's necessary to create that canopy cover percentage that was referenced before. So, those are the two kinds of pieces to this reforestation kind of a standard. It's fairly open and flexible. One of the nice things about the reforestation approach is, if you've got a site that's already deforested, right, it was a farm, or a field, or something like that, you know, these things can operate as a forestation standards. In other words, you can put trees back, that will expect a 20% or a 30%, or whatever the percentage number is for that zoning district, to be, you know, retained to tree canopy, you know, at some out year in the future when the trees are mature. So, that's the desirability of that, of that approach. It puts the decision, the calculus, more so in the hands of the developer than it... It puts the decision, the calculus, um, more so in the hands of the developer than it, than does a strict retention standard. The retention standard can create some friction and sometimes unintended consequences. You can't get access to the site, you can't build the site because the trees are where the building is. That makes it very difficult and it calls for complex mitigation strategies that you could simply sidestep with a reforestation approach. So I, I'm a big, it's, it, you're probably getting this since I'm a big believer in the reforestation approach, but that's only because it's much more practical. Uh, the end goal is tree canopy. How we get there could be a little easier under a reforestation strategy, it does take longer.
So can I get you to talk a little bit more about street trees? Because we know that there are significant benefits to street trees. And in my very limited time on council, we've had at least one interaction where it, it felt like there might have been a bit of gamesmanship about design that, oops, street trees aren't possible here.
Right. The street trees are frankly pretty difficult to accommodate. I'm a big believer in street trees, I think they're important. Oftentimes, we see them in the most urban areas, like your downtown. Street trees should be in the right-of-way. If you own the right-of-way, and a lot of them you do, then you have control over that. And, um, that's a much easier proposition. If, on the other hand, the road belongs to DOT, that's a different matter. One of the biggest challenges for street trees frankly isn't, um, the applicant, isn't necessarily the community, it's the town's own engineering department. And rightfully so. They have a responsibility too, right? They've got, uh, you know, accommodate the sewer lines, the water lines, the underground infrastructure, the sidewalk. And all of those things can, in some cases, be negatively impacted by the street tree standards. What I'm used to seeing is a twofold approach. One is basic requirements for street trees in the most urban parts of the community, that those street trees be in the right-of-way between the back of the curb and the sidewalk, okay? So they're between the traffic and the pedestrians, uh, because that's where they make sense. With some rules about whether it's a canopy tree or an understory tree based on, you know, uh, the utility system in place. Some places, and, and I'm not suggesting that Carrboro is one of those, but some places also utilize what we call a streetscape buffer, which is street tree-like, but those trees are outside of the right-of-way. They're at the front of the lot line on private property. They're still protected, they have to be there. Part of the development approval is that your streetscape buffer be in place. It's no coincidence that the streetscape buffer tree planting looks an awful lot like street tree planting, right? Certain number of trees with a minimum distance on center, um, either canopy or understory trees based on the utility system that's in place there. It just, the, the, the difference is they're not between the sidewalk and the traffic. They're on the backside of the sidewalk. But at the end of the day, you're still getting a tree-lined right-of-way corridor. Urban, it's between the sidewalk and the cars. Less urban, um, it's on the backside of the sidewalk. Did that answer your question? I know that was a long. People are trying to counsel me on how to keep my answers more succinct, practicing.
Those, those make a lot of sense. And we've, it's a particular challenge because of the way that our utilities are set up, that, um, street trees are so important and you don't want to induce everyone, including the town and the developers, to spend a ton of money on trees that are going to get one whole side whacked off by Duke Energy in a few years.
Right. Anybody who's been to Durham knows there's some, some particularly egregious examples, uh, in, in downtown Durham.
Fidelity Street lost most of its shade in the last round, so.
Right. So, you know, in, in that instance, the streetscape approach, you know, has some utility, pardon the pun. You, you know, you can keep those trees outside of the easement, um, and therefore there's no need to cut them. So that's, you know, an exploration. That, that would be my suggestion is a blend of the two with the application of the street tree standard in the urban districts, whatever those end up being. And, um, you know, we could create an option, uh, an alternative plan option where even in the urban areas, if there's some utility issue that we can't overcome, then in that instance, those trees would be outside of the right-of-way, if that makes sense. Okay?
Coming back to the rest of the, the topics here, um, I suspect, and I'm sort of looking around the room as I say this to see what y'all think, that we would all be on board with a mandate limiting development in special flood hazard zones that is stricter than it is today, right? We have developments existing in Carrboro today that had we known they were going to flood the way they have done now, we would not have wanted those to be built. That's a pure public safety measure, right? So we don't want to expand on that. Exactly which year flood plain standard that is, I think we've got to figure out. I know we may have some new data coming out soon-ish, new maps. It would be really good to line that up so that we can make sure we get a strong standard there. I don't see any reason for that to be anything other than a mandate.
Very good.
On the tree provision side, I, I've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of projects do really go, jump through an enormous number of hoops to save a, a particular tree in ways that sort of twist the whole project and then
The tree dies.
The tree dies. Surely there are, sometimes directly because of the construction, right? That the standards for tree protection of that existing tree were not good enough, or it was the tree's time and we didn't know it at the time. And so we saved the tree and then five or 10 years later, it's gone. So that, that makes sense. It sounds like that's an area where there might be a lot of, like a lot of room for us to sort of right-size that approach.
I think so.
I'm curious if you've, if you've run into any instances for, for the most urban districts for downtowns of thinking about shade requirements as apart from trees. We're going to need all the shade we can get in the summers, but there are a lot of lots in the downtown that don't currently have trees on them that are currently 100% impervious. If I'm thinking about one of those lots being redeveloped, is the best thing we can do to say, oh, and by the way, you need to find a way to somehow fit 20% canopy coverage on here or you're going to go through a variance process because it's not possible for you to meet our standard? Versus, is there some, is there a way we can structure that to offer our most urban lots shade altern, you know, shade options that don't require them to be able to support, uh, trees in that location, but still give people shade?
Wow, great, great, great question. So, at the head of the discussion, we were talking about downtown and about how a lot of, a lot of approaches seek to, to remove standards and requirements from downtown in pursuit of kind of increasing the development potential, the relative desirability of developing in the downtown context. Because it's more expensive, because it's more trouble, because it's easier to develop in the greenfield areas, we don't, you know, the, the downtown doesn't get the love that we'd like it to have. And, um, a common response from a regulation is to, is to remove those obstacles, remove those stops. A new standard that would say, you're 100% impervious, you want to redevelop, we're going to make you, you know, um, put in trees or, or, or pay money. Certainly something that you could do. As a policy matter, you need to balance that benefit against the potential disincentive to develop that, redevelop that site because of the various things that are already stacked up against it. The notion that we could provide shade for pedestrians as part of a, a set of standards or set of incentives, because remember, remember that pesky downzoning bill. That's probably the right way for us to go in the downtown. Having said that, you know, and I know this isn't necessarily a downtown issue, but, uh, you know, it's very common for us to include shading standards in parking lots. That's very typical, uh, and I think that that should continue. The street tree, I think we should continue with that. Oftentimes, the perimeter buffers aren't a thing in downtown. And other kinds of site landscaping typically exempted in downtown. Shade structures as an incentive, absolutely fantastic idea. And that's something that we could incorporate, um, you know, in, in these rules. Either or as conditions of approval. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to forget about that. You can, while, while we couldn't write standards that render existing developed lots non-conforming in non-residential districts like downtown, we can apply them as conditions of approval through conditional zoning. We can use development agreements, um, as methods of, um, you know, getting applicants to participate in those kinds of valid public, uh, you know, efforts. Now, there are some communities in North Carolina, um, I've not had a chance to talk with your legal counsel about this, and I don't know how you guys feel about this. There are some local governments that I know of that require development agreements as part of new development, um, particularly conditional rezonings. The, the ones that I am thinking about use it as a means of a backdoor to concurrency requirements. And more about that if you really want to, uh, if you want to learn, you know, hear more about how they do that. But the, the bottom line is this, they require the development agreement. A development agreement is a voluntary instrument. Um, an applicant can choose to enter into that with a local government or not. There are some local governments in the state who require them. You may decide you want to require them. If you did decide to require them, then you could incorporate things like shade requirements without worrying about the downzoning requirement, if that makes sense. We would need to talk about that and make sure that you guys are comfortable, uh, from a legal risk standpoint. Because that may lead to, to litigation. And, and again, it may not. But there are local governments who do this development agreement requirement as part of development in their community. But I'm going to write shade as incentive, sustainability incentive. Okay? Stormwater.
Popping right along, yeah, so popping right along to the stormwater standards. I've observed that we have a pretty easy time for commercial developments in particular. We have not actually experienced a lot of pushback from developers on the idea of catching the 100-year storm. I think mostly because they know that if they don't, their parking lot will be underwater. Something that makes sense to me is to thinking about mandates versus incentives, the way I'm thinking about this is that we need to know what our floor, what our, our floor is for, as we were saying about, for public health and safety, that that part ought to be a mandate for I think the, I, I agree with Danny that we want to avoid sort of the incentive shopping or ending up getting, you know, half of what we want in multiple different areas by setting up incentives that are a, a little bit too fungible. But sometimes you get a property where it's, where the, there's a particular reason that that property would, would really benefit from going all out on stormwater management. I'm thinking here, in, in our town's recent history here, I'm thinking about South Green, right? Where we got an extraordinary stormwater conveyance that handled stormwater coming from way off-site. Uh, that was handled as a, as a, um, a negotiation in a conditional zoning. But I think if we were going to set up an incentive that's available in the UDO, it would be, so in other words, have a mandate for what we feel is our floor, which I don't think our stormwater detention standard should get any, should get lighter. I'm on the fence as to whether or not we should strengthen it as a mandate. And I think if we offer an incentive, it should be for, like, really blow it out of the water around stormwater. Like, there are going to be some cases, I, I think there are some cases where you might say, yeah, actually, we do want to offer a stormwater incentive, but you have to really go for it in order to get to the point of being incented. Does that make sense?
This is very interesting.
What do you think?
I like it, and I, I wonder, maybe this is not great thinking, but hey, maybe it is. You know, we have these transitional districts out of downtown. You know, downtown largely impervious with very few exceptions. You know, is, is going to be relatively stable. But I wonder about these downtown transitional districts. That might be a place where the incentive to capture water from the impervious surface coming out of the high elevation in downtown, within these downtown transitional districts, if we do offer a heavy incentive for, like, something on the scale of the South Green, I don't think it would end up affecting that many developments in town. But three or four more of those in a radius from downtown would be notable. Does that sound practicable, Chad? Like, in, in these downtown, I mean, because that's getting pretty fine-grained.
Indeed, indeed it does. I, I think it would require, um, to, to, to be truly functional, I think it would require the town to have a very strong regional stormwater management plan. Where, when in the right development in the right place could be incentivized to, to provide the regional facility, which is kind of what you're talking about. You, this sort of idea of where can we do stormwater in places that benefits more than that one site?
We already know that there are some key corridors and that catch a lot of water from a lot of lots upstream and convey it to a lot of lots downstream. There are certain choke points in the drainage system and the topography of the town that would have an outsized impact on our stormwater.
I, I think we could, um, again, thinking about these as, as incentives, we could structure the language to incentivize quotes, "regional facilities", whatever that, we end up defining that as. Probably the places that you mentioned, like these, these areas that have a stormwater benefit beyond the lot lines where it would be located.
Can we structure that outside of the zoning? So in other words, uh, the stormwater utility maintains a list of critical, of critical locations for stormwater. If your lot, regardless of zoning, happens to fall into one of those, then you have access to an extra incentive for stormwater, something like that. Is that kind of structure plausible?
Sure, it, it, it is, it is. I, I, part of me likes the idea of having it outside the UDO because that keeps you out of, out of litigation. So I like that idea. The thing that I, that concerns me about that is I might not know, um, you know, that, that it would be necessary for staff and engineering to all be very well-informed about, you're a candidate for a regional stormwater incentive that your neighbor might not be. And so being sure that people understand that and that information's out there in circulation, I think it could work. And having it outside the UDO makes the UDO simpler, which is a good thing. And I think so the balance question is, does the benefit of a simpler UDO outweigh the potential negative of people not knowing because it's not in the UDO? I think that's the balance question on, on that, that line of logic.
I would love to know if there are other municipalities with stormwater challenges that have, have taken different approaches to this and how it's gone for them. Because I think it cuts across, I think it cuts across zoning.
I mean, certainly it cuts across zoning, particularly with downtown. Where, you know, we're, we are looking at trying to leverage our ordinance to improve, but I mean, like, almost nothing built in downtown is going to worsen the current stormwater effect. Yeah, I mean, that
There are what, maybe three buildings in downtown that have any stormwater detention system, right? Because they're, they're all new. So every downtown lot that is redeveloped acquires stormwater detention requirements it did not have before, right? So it's a net, yeah.
So if, if we talk about these as outside of the UDO, is it, this is just a town posser? Or this, I mean, I, I, I'm a little bit nebulous on, um, the relationship of like a community benefits agreement framework.
Right. So the community benefit agreement could, could certainly address this. So the community benefit agreement could certainly address this. Again, the community benefit question is, can we mandate this or can we just make this voluntary or do we, you know, allow somebody to do this because they've done something else? That, you know, is the fundamental underlying question. There are local governments who require community benefit agreements for certain kinds of developments. There's plenty of precedent out there for that now. The thing that comes to my mind is, here is this development, it's in a location that can provide a regional function. We want to encourage that, we want to support that, we want to, you know, make that easy. It seems to me, you know, that we would not want to make, we would not want to lay down additional requirements, additional, you know, agreements that have to be developed. All of these extra things that are piled on, to me, simply because I wound up with a piece of property that had a regional stormwater potential benefit. So, you know, I think we should identify those sites. I think there, the next question is, what should the incentive be? If I am going to do an oversized facility or a regional facility, do I get more density? Do I get more height? Do I get all of the above? How much is too much? How do we, how do we balance that is the next question. I think the concept is a great one, and frankly, I think it's okay to leave it generally in the UDO with the expectation that the engineering folks and whomever else is going to handle all this through a development agreement or through a CBA, Community Benefit Agreement, that is voluntary in nature and explains the rights and responsibilities that the town has and that the applicant has as part of this regional facility, if that makes sense. So I think we should say, hey, guys, there's spots in town that could serve as regional facilities, and if you're a willing owner, you can avail yourself of some of these things. You know, exactly what and how much will decide through the process, but that's an opportunity for you if you wish to take advantage of it, and that's where I would stop. And then I'd leave the process of how big and what do you get for it to the engineers who are doing the individual studies as part of the development, if that makes sense.
I think that makes general sense, yeah. I've got to noodle on that a little bit.
I would defer to my colleagues, but I would, I'm also very nebulous, especially given that there are two terms that I heard. One is community benefit agreement and one is community development agreement.
Right.
If that needs to happen in the context of a meeting or if it can happen asynchronously through more communication from you, I would definitely be more comfortable having that fleshed out a bit, how that would work before we go too much farther down that road.
Sure, absolutely. Not to belabor the conversation, I know we've got a lot to cover. The development agreement is a voluntary contract that is signed by the town and signed by an applicant. And there are a series of expectations of the applicant that are embedded in the development agreement. There are a series of expectations for the town that are also embedded in there. I might get a longer vesting term. I might get more density. I might get a taller building. I might get, you know, any number of things that are structured in the agreement. The difference between the development agreement or what makes it a development agreement is that it's voluntary in nature. Now, I did say earlier that there's some local governments out there that require these things. That makes me a little nervous, but it's done. So, you know, depending upon y'all's risk tolerance, you know, we could add Carrboro to the list of local governments that mandate these things. The community benefit agreement, by contrast, is generally mandated. It's not a voluntary kind of a thing. It's a, you want to do this use or you want to develop in that area, you're going to do a community benefit agreement, which is a lot like a development agreement, except it doesn't really talk much about what the town's responsibilities are, because there aren't any, okay? It's the applicant's responsibilities for the privilege of developing that proposed use in that particular location. So that's kind of the big difference between the two.
Can I jump in? Councilman Passata, I believe, maybe? I've been ignoring you, I apologize. Did you have your hand up before a question a while back?
Yes, but I already forgot what that question was. So when I think about it again.
Yeah, come on back in. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Chad.
This is great. I think that this gives me a good sense. We want to be clear, we don't want the incentives to interfere with our affordable housing incentives. Reforestation is preferred. We like this idea of street trees and streetscape, and maybe we keep that, you know, available to us with maximum flexibility. Not so sure about the limits on mass grading. We want to increase our special flood hazard area standards, mandate, that's not an incentive, we're going there. Consider the possibility of shade as a sustainability incentive. The stormwater question was a really good one, there's a couple here. One is, what's our floor for basic public health and safety? And whatever that is, that's our mandate. If our current standard gets us there, keep the standard as it is. If our current standard exceeds the floor, then keep it where it is. If it doesn't get us, you know, if our current standard doesn't get us to the floor, then raise it. That's a mandate. Add incentives for regional facilities or oversized, things that can serve more than one location. Keep it general and allow that to be worked out through a development agreement or community benefit agreement structure.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Chad, so regionally, folks in the conversation about climate resilience and sustainability in view of the North Carolina State Legislature are saying, are talking about adaptations. In fact, you used that word yourself a few minutes ago.
Right.
How will, how can the UDO rewrite be breathable enough for accommodations we have yet to...
To understand? It's a great question. Just like it's almost impossible to write use standards for a use that you don't know exists yet, it would be very, very difficult for us to sort of pre-anticipate or anticipate important, even necessary, sustainability resilience features. Say, for example, we wrote rules that said, hey, you know, we want to go to the 500-year flood. That's where we want to go. And then in five years, we find out that it's now, you know, that the 500-year flood is actually more, is sort of, you know, today's 100-year flood and that we actually should have gone to the 1,000-year, right? And, you know, the answer to the question is, we just don't know what we don't know. And you'll have to go back at that time and make adjustments. And unfortunately, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about these incentives because six months ago, well, almost a year ago, you could have just done this. You could have just done it. And now you can't. You have to, you have to get consent first.
That's right.
Which makes it even more difficult for us. We can do it in the residential property, but we can't in the nonresidential without consent. And that's just, that's a fight. Maybe in some instances, we can go there, in others, you probably don't want to go out and get 10,000 signatures. You know, you just don't want to do that. So that's, I wish I had a better answer to your question, it's a great one. I don't know. We can continue to offer incentives, and that's really where I think the future lies for us.
I guess the only thing, other thing that I would add is that, I don't know, 10 years or so ago, we talked about giving more definition and specificity regarding our own tree ordinance. We were starting to do that work before the pandemic. You know, we do not have a tree advisory group, you know, and there are other, Chapel Hill, for example, you know, they have, they do tree banking. I mean, there's a lot of vibrant discussion about different ways to approach tree canopy.
Sure.
Is there anything that the UDO needs to reflect in terms of having that kind of programming?
Right. Good question. Generally speaking, where I've seen those kinds of advisory boards be most successful is on, associated with trees on public property. So trees that are in parks, trees that are in the right-of-way, having that kind of advisory board installed makes a lot of sense. But the point that you made is a good one, in that communities that accept fee and lieu as mitigation or accept fee and lieu for planting of trees do need an administrative system for tracking those funds, tracking where they're going to be spent. And let's be honest, in this world, there's a coming sort of maximum temporal duration before we spend the money. You know, if you pass that sort of what's reasonable in terms of length of time, you know, there's an outside chance that you could be asked to give that money back, which is very difficult. So, you know, I would anticipate your UDO to include a fee and lieu procedure that would allow people to make fee and lieu payment as mitigation for removal of trees. Whether or not you want to hand the management of that system over to an advisory board, I'm not sure. That might be something that you want to keep with your staff. Having said all that, there is another topic that we need to talk about, maybe not today, but before we come to the end of this, is your staffing level. You have three staffers, and you ask a lot of those staffers. And we are suggesting in a lot of instances, increased administrative decision-making, which is going to place more burden on those staffers. So that's definitely something to fold away in the back of your mind as we think about, you know, the operational changes that we want to make and leaning into, you know, administrative decision-making, being sure that we've got enough staff on hand to do the job, right? Topic for another day, we'll come back to that one. But, you know, I would, I do expect a fee and lieu that you guys could certainly say, I'm sorry, we're not going to accept a fee and lieu on this matter. You're going to need to plant the trees, right? Whether you do that on your property or you do it on public property, that's, you know, we can talk about that, but, you know, some kind of mitigation makes sense. At a certain point, you can't continue to shove trees in a limited area. You gotta have, you know, be able to spread them out. You have to. So having that flexibility will be important.
And I guess the only other point that I wanted to tease out that was mentioned before when you were talking about the stormwater and engineering, and this was brought up by the Climate and Environment Advisory Commission, is the question of topography. And, you know, very specifically to the downtown area plan, you know, the consultant said something to the effect of that, well, once it's developed, topography doesn't matter. And that, I mean, it was a bizarre response because the topography is what it is, and it, you know, it's, you'd have to do massive change to make that change. So, you know, is there anything with the engineering that you were talking about? Because I found that very interesting when we talked, when you talked about regional facility, to have some topographic, you know, work done so that we know holistically what we're dealing with. Because you see, development tends to be very site or close to the site, very specific. But then, you know, when we look at Carrboro and Chapel Hill's topography writ large, it's a very different picture.
I think, it sounds like your engineer's office has some beginnings of understanding about, these are places that are potential regional, where a regional benefit could be, could be had for a practical amount, practical amount of money. I would say start there, and if that continues to operate well, great. If you get into that and you realize this isn't enough or it's not doing what we wanted to do, then I would suggest a wider study that contemplated, you know, topographic issues in pursuit of other, you know, regional kinds of opportunities for more regional systems in maybe the clear-cut areas that we already know, maybe outside of those, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, let me give an example, and it's not a perfect example, but it's the kind of thinking that I think is important. So when, when the developers for Jaden Creek off of 86, you know, they've done a massive amount of grading, they've done a massive amount of bringing in soil and raising that, the platform of that land, there's really a huge plateau there now. That impacts what will happen with the Bowling Creek down in Camelot Village in Chapel Hill. That's what I'm talking about. And so, you know, I just would like us to have that kind of thinking, whereas when we talk about a regional facility or we talk about anything else, we understand, you know, what happens on Old 86, you know, impacts Camelot Village. What happens at, you know, outside of our urban services boundary on Jones Ferry Road is going to affect Morgan Creek and the University of Lake.
Right. So the issue of the downstream impact is definitely one that's coming into stormwater standards now, and we're seeing that, and I think y'all are poised to address that, given the fact that you've got standards on the books. And I think, you know, I would defer to Hunter Freeman at McAdams, the guy who's doing the stormwater stuff on this project, for his thoughts about what tweaks are necessary for downstream impact to your current stormwater standards. And then some sort of anecdotal assessment about what that's going to do in terms of development cost. For me, I think it's an intriguing question, and the real question is, how much do downstream impacts influence our floor of public health safety? Because if it turns out that downstream impacts don't have deep impact on the floor that we care about, then maybe that's not something that gets factored in. There's going to be a policy question, a balance question there about, okay, the flooding that happens downstream, is that a significant enough issue or concern for us that we're going to forego affordable housing because of the costs associated with it, trigger our floor standard, and therefore, you know, we recognize that that improvement's going to be so expensive that we could, we may need to forego affordable housing in that location. Does that make sense? I realize it's a complicated sort of logic chain there, but that's something for us to better understand, how much of the downstream impact, you know, there's state rules about that, but they're limited, and, you know, sometimes for good reason. And I don't know enough, I'm not a stormwater engineer, to know how your current approach is dealing with downstream impact. I do know this is becoming a thing, and we're starting to see more get integrated in. And then the question that Hunter needs to pose and put on the table for you guys to consider is, how much of this downstream impact do we want to address? How much do we want to take on? And are we prepared, you know, what costs are we willing to bear to take that on as a policy matter, if that makes sense? So I will ask Hunter about that, along with your other question, which is how are other communities dealing with stormwater?
And is there anything else, you know, so, so thinking of what is downstream to Carrboro, one of the things that was put into place a long, long time ago was the watershed protection around Carrboro. So one of the reasons why Carrboro has been fairly... So one of the reasons why Carboro has been fairly buffered is that the watershed protection immediate to Carboro, like west of Fayetteville Road, is a really good example of how having that pervious surface to accept the water. And is, is, are there things in this U D O going forward in the rewrite that we need to do to fortify what it was set with that?
Right. So it's a great question, and water supply watershed rules are great rules. Generally speaking, most of the time, those W S W rules apply to land that's residential in nature. We could, in, I, I think certainly you should carry forward your current standards. I don't see any reason to reduce them. Whether or not you want to enhance them, we have to begin to ask ourselves the question, where? Because we can do this in residential districts without tripping over the down zoning provision. Cannot do this in non-residential districts without tripping over the down zoning provision. And I realize that's kind of crazy and nuts because water is water and it doesn't care where residential and non-residential is, but we have to, unfortunately.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Which may seem very basic and silly, but for my own benefit and anyone listening at home, is a mixed use district a residential district for the purposes of this question?
Really?
Fantastic, fantastic question. And I, I will give you the answer that I've heard from the attorneys that I've spoken with about this. And, and you guys can decide, because it's kind of open ended. What I have been told from others is, if the zoning district has the word residential in the name, then it is residential. If it does not, then it is not.
Oh, wow.
This has not been litigated.
It sounds like it's going to be by somebody at some point.
Nobody knows the answer to that question. That was not contemplated by the General Assembly in drafting the bill. So we don't know. And so that very simplistic explanation is all I can give you.
Councilmember Posada, I'm sorry, Cath, councilmember, okay. Councilmember Posada, while you still remember, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Barrett. I wanted to follow up on that question, right? So, or just so that I'm understanding this, if we were to say we're going to name everything, even some of the non, current non-residential and just call it business residential and just, or something rather, and just add the word residential to every zone that we have in Carboro? And we can decide?
Only him.
Now, that's, that's.
Is, is that a strategy? Is that a strategy? And, and I, I think the answer is probably not. Having said that, if I were a council member in a town and I was writing a new U D O and I was going to add a new district, I'd probably call it residential and I'd allow non-residential in it by right, but I'd probably call it residential. Yeah.
That's where I was going.
I think that's what I would do. And I, I, it sounds crazy, but that's a way for us to navigate that strange piece of the law that we have. And in fact, we are doing that in Mills River. We are, we have a mixed residential zoning district that allows primarily commercial development, but we are calling it mixed residential.
Primarily residential.
Well, it's.
Just asking.
It's, it allows, it, we, we are taking what is their neighborhood commercial district and we are turning it into mixed residential. And that is what we are.
But the focus is commercial.
It allows commercial? It is, it is a residential district that allows a lot of commercial. But it's a residential district.
I like that way of thinking.
So did they. It, it's not intuitive, but it, at least it meets the test of the law, as we understand it at this point.
Okay, no, thanks, that's, I know it was a little jokey, it's not a word, comical, that I asked that, but I am curious, right? How do we go around some of these, you know, and C G A sometimes not fully thought out, you know, pieces of, of, of law that, and, you know, not allow us to do what we need to do in Carboro? And if that means thinking about a new zone that it's even labeled as residential, I'm happy to, I would be more than inclined to look into what that looks like.
I would suggest to you that you should anticipate from us, if we are writing new districts for you, there's a pretty good likelihood that it's going to have the name residential in it. Simply because that keeps us from, you know, having to get consent if we decide to change the standards after the fact. Not necessarily great planning, but great law abiding, how about that?
We'll take it.
Okay, unless there are other questions on, on the.
I have two tiny items that I just want to make sure I get out.
Councilmember Frey and then moving right along, is that what we're?
Yes, ma'am.
Something that we have occasionally bumped into is that the stormwater control measures specified in our ordinance are, become outdated or a little too specific, or someone wants to try something that is more cutting edge and is not listed. I think we'd want to make sure that we don't define the allowable measures. We, we want them to be reasonable measures, but we don't want to define them so tightly that something that becomes state of the art requires us to do a code, a code revision.
Absolutely, understood.
Okay. There's actually a really good bullet point here. Should the U D O revise the current impervious surface limitations from 5,000 net square feet addition per project? I'm not sure that we should have a impervious surface limitation for net addition. And the reason I say that is because if the, if the stormwater of the lot is still managed and it still meets our other requirements for trees, for shade, whatever other requirements are, I'm not sure that just the fact of an increase in impervious surface by itself, separate from any other performance of the lot, should be a trigger for us to restrict that development.
This standard interferes with redevelopment and densification.
Exactly.
It absolutely does. And again, another, a, a policy balance question, you know, do, which one do we want to encourage here? The densification and, and sort of intensification of the areas that already have infrastructure? Or not? And, and, you know, I mean, that's a really, really good question. Do you guys have a feel about this? I think you're, you made your point clear, which is maybe this isn't a standard that we, we want to have, or at least we want to apply as uniformly as maybe we have in the past. Perhaps there's parts of town that we don't want to apply this standard to, right? Maybe there's others that we do around University Lake, you know, maybe in the north, northern transition area, something like that, but maybe not in, you know, the downtown area.
I think where I come to this is that the, the typical suburban lawn is a dramatically degraded surface compared to an, an actually undeveloped lot. People think that when they have green open space, that they have a lawn, that that is a stormwater facility, and it isn't by, by any reasonable measure. So if we have a property that's already been cleared and graded in the past, I don't know what is the value of that being, going from being ninety percent, like, because that is already ninety percent non-infiltrable at that point. That last ten percent of infiltration, how much density are we willing to give up for that? Yeah.
That's in the, in the bin of questions for Mr. Freeman to, to work on.
I have a question, Chad. So where, where are we as far as just thinking time and what's left? And what, how far we want to get?
I have a few questions about affordable housing that I would like to ask you. And then I wanted to, to circle back over our procedural stuff generally and re-articulate for you the, the conception about, kind of, kind of the parameters of the procedural changes that we'd like to suggest you consider and make sure that everybody's like, yep, that's what I understood you to say last time, and yep, that's good, or nope, we don't want to do that. So that, those are the two more areas that I have to cover. I think the affordable housing probably will take a little bit of time. The procedure stuff, I don't think it will, since I'm just summarizing for you what I, what I think we're going to, what we'd like to propose, and then making sure that everybody's, you know, understood that. And we're, you know, okay to continue with that, along that line.
And councilmembers, do you need a break? Are, are we good to just move right along? Head shaking, roll on, let's roll on.
All right. Okay, last time, we talked about affordable housing. Here is our operational understanding of what we're doing and some, some questions for you based on that. Okay, so the comprehensive plan has a goal of creating a thousand units of affordable housing over the next ten years, fifteen years? Ten years, seven years? The, the L D O has a policy that fifteen percent of new residential development should include affordable housing. Everybody realizes and remembers that we can't mandate affordable housing in North Carolina, at least not yet, maybe someday, but not yet. Okay, if we use the fifteen percent number as a guide, all right, in, in contemplating how we get to the thousand, we'll need about 6,500 new units at the out year of our comp plan in order for us to, to render the thousand affordable units that we wanted, okay? In other words, around 400, 430 units a year, every year, for the next fifteen years, which is more than Durham sees, more than Raleigh sees. So we're talking about a fairly dramatic increase in, in residential development over the next fifteen years, year on year. Not impossible, it's certainly done. So to the questions, you know, is a thousand units, is that about right? Is it too much? Is the fifteen percent goal, is that, should we raise that? If, if, are, are we, are we comfortable in contemplating, you know, 6,500 new, new units and we got our fifteen percent? You know, is, is that too much? Is the fifteen enough? Should we explore how we count our natural, naturally occurring affordable housing that we preserve over that same timeframe and consider that as part of the thousand? Is that maybe something? I, I just wanted to get y'all's reaction to this notion about the thousand units, the out year, is it ten, is it seven, is it five? And what does that mean, you know, in terms of our fifteen percent, you know, sort of, you know, L D O policy or, or goal, I guess is probably the right word. Reactions?
I have a question for, is it okay if I ask?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I want to start at the, at the very basic place and I want to ask, I want to ask us to be clear about affordable housing. Affordable for whom? There's such a wide scale, what are we really talking about? You know, folks in the community ask me this all the time. And if you talk to ten people, you're going to get ten different perspectives on those two words, especially when you put those two words together.
Absolutely.
How are we defining it for this U D O?
Right, great question. How most local governments do it is they rely on what's called the area median income, okay? And that number isn't something that we just pull out of the air. That's given to us by HUD, or at least it has been in the past. We don't know. But every year, by M S A, the A M I calculation, that number, what the, what the area median income is established for us, generally speaking, right now, today, and conceivably going forward, a, a percentage of that A M I threshold is, is what is considered to be affordable. At this point, it's eighty percent, okay? So if this particular rental unit or, or for sale unit constitutes eighty percent of, of what the housing, you know, of what would be spent for housing for, you know, the area median income, then that is considered to be affordable. There's an additional kind of rule of thumb out there, which is the idea of who is cost burdened, right? Who has to spend, you know, what percentage of their income on housing and what, what becomes unreasonable or, or quote, cost burden? And that's usually thirty percent. Anything, if you spend more than thirty percent of your income on housing, you're considered to be cost burdened. Those parameters, those mechanics are, are embedded in your current rules. One suggestion, one thing to think about, one, one topic that was brought up by the Economist on the team is that eighty percent number typically corresponds with rental housing. And that if you want to establish an affordability frame for housing that's for sale, then that eighty percent should actually drop to sixty percent. And so if you, if you're looking for, you know, encouraging affordable housing that is, that is available for purchase, that, that number should be at the sixty percent A M I threshold, not the eighty percent. And so, you know, that's, that's what affordable for whom is. There's another aspect, obviously, which is how long? How long is it affordable? Lots of different schools of thought. A lot of places pick a thirty year timeframe, that it has to remain, quotes, affordable for a thirty year time period. Others pick a, a longer term, a ninety nine year term. You know, and, and that's usually how it's done. The wisdom of that is open for discussion about the duration. There are a lot of people who say, I can't bootstrap. If the amount of money that I can charge for selling my house is limited, then how do I ever bootstrap out of that? And that's a valid consideration. I don't, I don't have the answer. I'm just, you know, all I can say is that's, that's some of the things that we've heard. But does that answer your question about affordable for who?
In, in part. I guess what I want to, I want to get at is the fact that, and I apologize, my son is trying to call me. When you just talked about a thousand units, four hundred and thirty a year, we don't know where on that continuum, I mean, you know, how many of those would be looked at as maybe being in the eighty percent A M I? How many would, would be units that could be sold or purchased? And I'm just going to bring this up because, you know, I, I can't seem to get a really good conversation about this. But if we're talking rentals in a college town, we're not talking about affordability for the people who work here or work at the university.
Right.
We're talking about students.
Right.
And when we talk rentals, and, and I really think this is a conversation that needs to be had, rentals in and of themselves, aside from the fact that we're in a college town, right, are a red line against developing intergenerational wealth. We have to. We have to grapple with that issue of inequity. We don't. And it, so that's one of the issues that we're not talking about. Because we're not talking about creating homes that can be leased owned. We're not talking about housing that can, over time, be starter homes. We're not talking about an entire stock that could lend itself for folks to build equity. I have a serious problem with that in terms of looking at a 15, 20, 40-year future. Because I know that our middle is shrinking. That affordability, if you ask folks who are working through being in the middle, that their affordability has shrunk in the last year. They don't know where it's going. So you have the problem of a shrinking middle. At the same time that if you are planning for this massive development, and most of which would probably lean very quickly into rentals, as in Chapel Hill, you're creating a red line for people to move into the community who would be in the community long-term. And develop, you know, community building by being here and developing equity within the community. I, I need to understand, you know, what are we doing that is not defining how folks can build into their own community? Long-term?
It, it, it's a great, great question. And we have a big limitation that I want to get out on the table before we go any further. And that is, we are not able to regulate rental versus ownership.
That's right.
That is not something that we can affirmatively regulate. Having said that, you know, there are covenants, deed restrictions, development agreements, community benefit agreements, where an applicant could voluntarily choose to, to, to self-regulate in terms of rental versus ownership. But, but, you know, we, as, as the, as the, you know, kind of local government, that is really outside of our purview. And we are, under the fair housing laws, not permitted to, to make those distinctions. Please.
Can I, you asked a question that kicked this off, and that was about naturally occurring affordable housing. And I wanted to give my personal answer, which is yes. That I would like us to count that, and I would like us to have a strategy for hanging on to it.
Okay.
Something that I wanted to pick up here, and just, and for, just for anyone who's listening at home or hasn't, hasn't been following the math, I'm going to do this in terms of per month. This could be mortgage or rent, right? But just ballpark, I'm using round numbers here based on the local AMI. The 80% point is around 1,900 bucks a month. The 60% AMI is around 1,400 a month here. The 30% is about $712 a month, which puts a real fine point on like, which of, what, which of these numbers are achievable on the open market? Which are achievable if you have market rate units in the same building that can help subsidize? And which ones happen only with the town kicking in, right? Or with Lytech or something else like that? Because you just can't achieve it on the open market.
Right. Something you just said, I, I think is very, very meaningful, which is, you know, in, in a state like North Carolina, where we don't have inclusionary zoning and where we can't have inclusionary zoning, the best we're able to do, frankly, is ask nicely for the private sector to provide this stuff. Or the local government can shift and move into providing, you know, this public good that is, that is housing that's affordable. And I, I think, you know, I'm not a housing planner. I think you guys are working on an affordable housing plan. Any successful strategy is going to have both of those prongs. A government kind of provision and incentives to incentivize the private sector, recognizing that those incentives, you know, are, you know, not, not the silver bullet, not the panacea. You know, that, that we can, we can make these requests and, and we should. And we should make it a win-win and make that easy to, to happen. And recognize that, that is, would, would not likely help us meet our goals. That there's other things that we would have to do above and beyond the development regulation to reach success.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Passaro Rosco as a comment or a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just wanted to kind of jump in with a couple of questions, right? Well, first, I am with Councilmember Palmer on making sure that we're counting the natural, like, the units that we're, we're continuing to keep affordable, right? There's some naturally occurring, trying to keep those over, and I want to count those. But I'm curious, coming along those lines, talk to me how we're currently addressing mobile manufactured homes and planning. Where do these, where do those lie? How, is there anything currently looking at? How do we protect the ones that are currently existing within our town? And those are several questions, so I'll try to answer those, and I'll probably have some more.
So is that preservation or overlay? Is that what you're, something along those?
Yeah, I was thinking like a preservation overlay. What does that look like, if that exists? All that fun stuff.
So, I'm looking at, I'm, I'm looking at your use table. Which is a beautiful table, for sure. You-
Chad, it's okay, you can be honest.
The, the, the current standards allow, you know, the, the so-called Class A mobile home, generally by right, in kind of the middle block, most of, but not all of. Not the least dense, but the middle block zoning districts that are there. These, these Class A mobile homes are allowed. You're going to ask me, what's a mo, what's a Class A? As well, you should. A Class A, for lack of a better term, is a double-wide, okay?
A Class A is a double-wide.
A Class B, which, by the way, is not permitted in your use table right now, is a single-wide, okay?
On foundation, on a-
So, these are, you, that's a great, great question, too, which is this kind of mobile home on a foundation, not on a foundation. I want to keep this kind of on, on point as possible. North Carolina does not use the term "mobile home." It is not in the statutes. They use the term "manufactured home." Manufactured home is also on a chassis. It's built somewhere else and brought on a chassis, just like a mobile home. Sometimes the wheels can stay on the chassis, sometimes they come off. But most, so there's not really a distinction between kind of permanent foundation, not permanent foundation. They're all on a chassis. Sometimes they get masonry skirting around them, sometimes they don't. Interestingly, there's recent law that a mobile home park can't have requirements for masonry skirting around the, the base of the unit. But the point that I wanted to make is, right now, your current code does allow the double-wide manufactured home in many of the zoning districts that are residential. Does not allow the single-wide, based on the table of permissible uses that I'm looking at right now.
Chad, if I may break in, I know this is not the main place you're going, but does anyone see any reason for us to retain the prohibition on single wides? Like, nobody's home is an eyesore in Carboro. Why would-
That'd be one of my, my follow-ups, actually, Councilmember Frey, around that distinction. I'm curious, and, and Chad, I know that you were going somewhere else. But do you have an idea of, or where are you seeing this before? The, the reason for the distinction between the single and the double?
Yeah, I have a lot of, yes, a lot of the reason for the prohibition is folks don't want single-wide mobile homes in their communities. I, why y'all's doesn't allow it, I, I don't know. I'm not sure of the background behind it.
I think you can likely assume that it's similar to a lot of other small towns in the, at the time that this ordinance was adopted.
Right. There is a, a growing kind of recognition of manufactured housing really being one of the best ways for us to accommodate affordability. And to that end, we are aware of numerous local governments who have mobile home sanctuaries, where these uses are protected, where they're encouraged, and, and frankly, where their, their, you know, even local, local deed restrictions that bar them are, are brought into question. So I think there's kind of an awakening to these uses. And, and there's, there, you know, when I started practice in North Carolina, a lot of local governments were like, we don't want these things. We don't want these things, get, get rid of these. Now, it's the opposite. People are like, let's keep them, let's find a way to encourage them. We do want to allow parks, we want to allow these on individual lots. You know, we even want to permit them on an existing lot that already has a single-family home on it. So there's been a real kind of change in direction. And I would anticipate something along those lines for Carboro. You know, if, if not the full-blown sanctuary, certainly a recognition of allowance for the narrower manufactured homes.
Well, and, and while you're touching on that point, my kind of thought about bringing this up is because I would very much be in line with looking at some of the protection areas around the ones that we current, the, the spaces we already have in Carboro. Not only for the affordability, but just the deep community that exists in, in, in these spaces. Of, of course, this is one of the easiest ways for folks to get an affordable home to be, you know, like, coming from someone who grew up, you know, in, in, in a mobile home. Like, then lived in several different parks in different states. It's easiest way to, to, easiest entry to, to, to stable housing, so. That was kind of where I was going with, with this piece, is we're looking at not only a, a homeownership, which I was actually going to, and thank Councilmember Frey for breaking those numbers down, because I was going to ask what the exact look to that. I can totally see bringing it down to 60, which of course, you know, then we have to look at numbers and whether, whether or not we're going to be able to meet those thousand mark, or whatever. But I would, you know, venture to say and ask my colleagues to support something around protecting the, the existing mobile home spaces or manufactured home neighborhoods. Because it's just, just a key piece, not only for affordability for the community, but also the, the number of diverse folks that live in those spaces by, without creating that protection. And then redeveloping, it's the possibility that those will be pushed out of Carboro. And that, that's just something that I know that all of us cannot accept.
Understood.
I wanted to come back to the, the core question that you had here on the sheet, which is, you know, should the eligibility of an applicant be based on the number of affordable units or on the AMI target? We need the whole array of affordable price points. I think as we're thinking about, as we're thinking about the, like, what is the whole, the whole chunk of the thousand is 80 and below. But I'd like to see if we can do something that helps incentivize not just, not just the 80% price point, but to like, actually blend it in.
Okay, so the, the spectrum, the scaled system is, is what you're, you're interested in? Okay.
And, and I'm saying that knowing that 30% is really hard to hit and that you can't do it with the UDO alone. So wanting to make sure that our, our UDO does not get in the way of some of those steeply affordable options, but knowing that that's, that's not enough by itself. So if you just say, oh, hey, by the way, in order to do, in order to get a benefit for affordability, you must include one 30% unit, is more likely to drive down the total amount of affordability, rather than to get us the 30% unit. You can't ask someone to do something that doesn't pencil-
Pencil out.
Right.
Understood.
I think in particular for the 30, we, I don't know that this impacts the code too much, but what we'll be thinking about is, like, that's really where we need to be facilitating those. Like, we need to be permitting the development that we facilitate with land banking and subsidy from the town end, essentially. I, I, I don't see 30% happening through zoning almost ever.
One of my goals with doing this is how do we make sure that our, our PZI team is able to spend, you know, is able to collaborate with our affordable, our affordable housing team to spend time on making this happen and finding ways to get these steeply affordable units, rather than on going through the administration of complicating building market rate units?
Right.
Or 80% units?
One, one way of thinking about this for us is if we look at the 60% and the 80%. 80% at 1,900, you know, roughly another 20, $380, 100%. So you're looking at, you know, a 60% unit is losing $700 a month to a developer in Carboro, which means we are into them from their perspective of what we need to recoup from them. $8400 a year per unit, a value we need to deliver to make it pencil out. So that isn't happening. I mean, it's-
Not at all.
I, I, I think, I think that if we, I think, and for that reason, I think, like, what we need to do is facilitate 60 and 30 with our ordinance for like, what we are able to do, if we are able to, like, land bank, redevelop town land, find partners, we need to be able to not be in the way of 30 and 60. 80% I think is a feasible target for this, just because we need to be, just because we have to move the needle. We have to, we have to do something that is, that is feasible. And I just, you know, that, that scale at 60% is not going to be appealing. Developers are going to walk away from it. We're going to get the payment in lieu.
Right.
And so to me, I think that, like, 80% is not the policy North Star desirable outcome of this council. But I think it is the best way we have to use this ordinance so as to make zoning work best for affordability. I just want to make sure that when we go to build projects with partners, we are open to go lower with ease and that our staff doesn't have to work too hard to do that.
Okay.
As you're thinking about incentives, I mean, maybe one way to look at it is, listen, what we're, a little bit like the stormwater, right? There, there's a level that we are expecting when we talk about affordability, which is probably 80%. And then we say, hey, but if you really knock it out of the park, hey, what if you swapped out, you know, what if you, you count a 60% unit double against that incentive? Right, it should scale, it should actually scale pretty hard because a 60% unit is even more valuable, like dramatically more valuable than an 80% unit, because they're just harder to build.
Right. And I, I think ultimately, one of the, one of the questions we'll need to continue to grapple with is how far are we willing to go on granting incentives? And what does, what does that incentive look like? Is it a density bonus or some kind of waiver? Is it a density bonus or some kind of waiver plus administrative review and decision? You know, and, you know, I think that's an important question. One that I was going to cover with you guys when we got into procedures was this notion about administrative review. And I think that that is a common strategy that a lot of local governments use. I think that I would strongly encourage Carboro to move into a stance where there was more administrative decision-making. And I just want to be sure that the ramifications of that are, are clear. You know, in terms of what that administrative decision-making means. The, the notion of incentives kind of turbocharges those potential ramifications. Imagine a situation where somebody is doing a development that incorporates affordable housing that, you know, a year- that, you know, a year ago would have been a special use permit and, you know, a a very long process, but going forward becomes an administrative decision. Particularly in the situation where that development is an administrative decision and there's a density bump that is significant. Um, and and so being cognizant of the the tradition of Carboro in terms of public participation and people's opportunity to participate and 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 that stuff, we need to keep that in the back of our mind and balance against that, too. Um, and, you know, I think that is one of the things that where my my mind is is heading these days is, okay, how much incentive is enough versus how much incentive is 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 too much? Y'all are gonna make that decision, you know, I you will have to work together to kind of figure out where is that line? Um, but that's definitely where my head is now, uh, and I'm I'm a little, you know, I don't, I can't make the decision for you, but I wanted you to know that that's kind of what's rattling around back in the in the, you know, back reaches of my my brain. I have a similar kind of a question. It's bullet number three. Let's just say for the sake of argument that we ended up granting density bonuses for affordable housing or exempting affordable housing from density counts, you know, altogether, um, which I think are both really rational responses to the goals that you guys are looking to do. Are there areas of town, um, locations, uh, districts, um, you know, zip codes, geographies, whatever, are there places where, you know, those kinds of bonuses or exemptions, you know, are inappropriate? Or is is could this be done everywhere?
I think everywhere.
In general, I think everywhere. Um, and I what I want to, as an example, you're talking about uses, right? Now, currently, we have a separation between, um, in the table permissible uses between single family and multifamily residential. So it's like you're saying, oh, by use. So do you treat affordability benefits differently in multifamily than single family? No, I don't think so.
No, I don't.
If it looks like a house, if it looks like a home and it houses people, I would want it to be, to have an even playing field.
Mm hmm.
Agreed.
I don't think that that is, I don't think that's district specific either.
Mm hmm. Okay. All right.
And I I I mean, I think our sense of density, I mean, the way I think about this is I'm hesitant to, you know, I want to really strongly incentive, I like, I like, I like a lot of density incentive. The only downside to the density incentive is I want our baseline to be pretty high. You know, I I don't, the only, I just, I don't want to be withholding the density that we want. So which is to say that for my personal taste, I throw this out to evaluate. You know, like, as we get denser in most places, I, you know, like, I would, I would think, like, quite a bit of density for affordable com- like affordable commitments in almost every district and use.
The the what I'm thinking about is, does density work as a, as an incentive for affordability? If you're already, if you're already encouraging density, right? And is it, is there, what 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 else is left to give?
Mm hmm. That's a good question. You know, we need to, we need to get farther in our drafting to be able to answer that question. You know, a- after density bonus becomes relief. Um, relief from other otherwise generally applicable requirements. Um, you know, there's, there's kind of density and then there's height and then there's relief. Um, and relief could be even something um like open space, uh, relief from our very stringent stormwater requirements. You know, and and so we get to this question of balance, right? About, well, we we really want to deal with, you know, environmental protection and so forth, and all that stuff is really good. We also want housing, but we know that that's really expensive. So how do we, it gets to your point, which is, are we diluting, um, you know, our affordability goals by offering incentives for other kinds of of environmental features? But i- i- if density bonus and height bonus doesn't do the trick, what's left?
I g- I guess my point, my point amounts to, like, possibly being willing to go really tall, like, in a lot of places.
Well, the reason I was thinking about this is because height, as you say, similar to density but different. Well, it's it's different in a really important way. Height is an increase in density without an increase in stormwater.
Right.
Right? No further impervious surface. So height is sort of the easy one. You're like, yes, because it is not, you're not changing, you know, when you have added height, you're not really changing the footprint.
Right, but but you wouldn't see a a six story, single family home, right? You would, th- those buildings that have the taller height have a bigger footprint, kind of de facto.
Mm hmm.
Um, but but yes, I I I agree with you. Generally speaking, on the, on the lower end of the unit counts, height does equate to, you know, a a three story um triplex or a four story quadplex could fit within the footprint of a single family home. And you get, you know, more, more
That's exactly.
Density bang for the buck without a whole lot of impact on the impervious surface, provided you don't mess up your parking rules. Um, yes, absolutely. And the question becomes, okay, does that mean the strategy is, you know, duplex, triplex, quad, middle housing? Um, you know, or is the strategy, we're really talking about, you know, townhouse, you know, multi-story condo, is that the the way that we get to the thousand?
I mean, if we're getting to a thousand, we are talking.
Think that's a yes and if we're gonna actually.
Probably both.
Talking about multifamily and condo. I mean, I I mean, and this is, this is where, too, I think, like, I want to be really clear-eyed about the thousand. I'm happy to have an aggressive North Star. But does it, I I'm, I am famously on the record for not wanting to adopt unenforceable uh goals and measures. Are we hindered by that goal? I mean, I I don't know. I like, I'm I'm happy with, like, our, like, it's pedal to the metal on affordability. That, I think, reflects our shared thinking. So I'm really just curious about y'all's temperature on, like, whether that number needs to, you know, like, because to me, if we are considering, whether it's a thousand, I mean, seven hundred fifty would be really aggressive. Six hundred would be really aggressive. All of those numbers, to me, are like, we are talking about condo development in a lot of places. And so that is great. Um, as far as I'm concerned. Curious what y'all think about those, that series of points.
Um, so are are we, like, actually tying this this density conversation to affordability? Can we?
Well, the question, we're, we're, we're height in particular, as opposed to, like, density, like, one to four, that math is, like, on our side, but not as dramatically, if we're talking to Chad's point. But if we, like, have a pretty wide range of town where we're like, you know, I think we've been kind of like back of the envelope. We've been thinking about, like, five downtown, three possibly elsewhere. Um, and that that, like, broadly conforms with, like, the S U Ps we've been granting. It's like three is within the ballpark of things we like. You know, if it's, you know, if it's seven downtown with affordable and five elsewhere for, like, with affordable, like, that floor, that added floor, that is where, like, you're starting to talk about eighty four hundred dollars a month. You know, if you're, like, giving relief from statutory delays, a number I commonly hear is three hundred thousand dollars of advisory board, like, faffing around. If you remove that, um, twelve units for a year. And so then you add a floor, developers' pencils start to get, like, a lot better. So, I mean, like, uh, just like brass tacks here, you know, like, I I love the idea of, like, where we think of, like, single family Carboro, you know, going to these these cottage courts, these townhomes, like, a lot of the forms we've been discussing. But like, as we're talking about, like, out Old Eighty Six, as we're talking about, like, the greenfield that we have available to us as we get, like, possible um zoning authority, I think we have to be thinking about condo. We have to be thinking about second urban areas in order to, like, permit. I mean, otherwise, we are strictly not talking about a thousand houses. And I'm happy to not talk about a thousand, but we're not talking about six hundred if we're not talking about, like, wide scale multifamily.
I'm not particularly about, oh, I'm sorry.
I I ju- I I want to just tag on to Barbara's question. Miyafushi's question, tying density to affordable housing. I think that's very tricky. Um, I I grew up in New York City. Plenty of density. And um, and I've seen all kinds of housing as a result of having lived in New York. And I don't see evidence that density necessarily equates to affordability. What information do we have in North Carolina with, um, because I want to keep it to North Carolina? What do we know about that relationship that can validate that, um, that if you build it, you know, a high enough percentage will be affordable? I'm looking at Chapel Hill. Not affordable. Plenty of housing built in the last six years. So, you know, and we have taxed ourselves for affordable housing monies. Um, and we will continue to do so because that is a goal, it's a value we have. But they're not going to be significant enough unless, you know, we have land to build and we have partners and we have subsidies. So, you know, having a density goal does not necessarily mean it's gonna meet affordability. I I really want to look at that and I want the folks in Carboro to understand that this is a primary question going forth with this council.
So I I think, um, one thing that it's, that it's likely incumbent upon the town as you guys move forward with this is that when development is coming in, it's affordable, that it's protected to remain affordable. And you guys are doing that now and you should probably continue with that. And that is the limitation on, you know, it's being sold, um, you know, to to a- above the the A M I. There needs to be deed restrictions on the units that are built under your affordability mantle. Um, if you don't have that, then you really haven't achieved what you've set out to achieve. And the point that you make, which is it's density, but it's not affordable, um, or affordable for who? Certainly something that that your staff and I have been asking ourselves about a lot. And we have a lot of great examples locally of tons of density, not a lot of affordability.
Right.
Um, and y'all are are, you know, good candidates for that kind of 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 misfire. Um, so the it it draws, it shines a bright light on the need for, um, making sure that those homes are protected regu- from, in a regulatory way so that they remain affordable. And that should be part of anything that you do. The density piece is really, we're, I I think what we're trying to do, uh, or what I'm trying to do, what I'm suggesting, you know, is we can't require affordable housing. All we can do is ask for it and create an incentive for the private sector to provide it. I think it's a smart approach to have the the public sector provide that that least profitable affordable housing. And I think you guys were dead on with with that thinking. The eighty percent number, can we incentivize the private sector to provide that? Yes, as long as it's protected and to remain affordable for thirty years or ninety nine years or whatever the number ends up being. The the reason we're talking about density or height is that's the inducement that we have at our disposal um, without the ability to require it. If we had the ability to require it, we'd simply require it. It would be, you gotta, you know, have it, but but we can't. We're we're stopped from doing that uh in North Carolina. So we have to create a reason for the development community to provide it. And that's the density bonus and the height bonus and maybe some of the relief things. That's why those are there. Uh, but certainly agree and understand what you're saying, which is, hey, wait a minute, affordable for who?
Yeah. Can we hear from Councilmember Frey, Merrill and Palmer, please? Or however y'all want to do it, it's fine.
Councilmember Palmer, would you actually like to hop ahead? You had an idea and I don't want you to lose it.
Oh, no, it's, it's just, height has been mentioned several times and I wondered if there, um, what the limits to that are uh of, like, how, how, because to the point of penciling out, um, what how, how much can we give away and actually get in the giving away?
Another really, really excellent question. The the underlying question behind a lot of incentives is how much is this worth? Is this really gonna move the needle? Um, if going from, you know, o- obviously, one of the reasons why we see a lot of three and sto- four story buildings is they don't have to be sprinkled.
Right.
After four, you got a sprinkler. Cost just, you know, increased exponentially. Um, there's probably, and and I'm not a structural engineer, there's another point, another inflection point uh beyond which, you know, we can no longer use the stick frame construction. We've got to be, you know, with a, with a, you know, masonry pedestal and, right, or steel. And then, you know, so that's another big cost jump. You know, whether that's five stories, six stories, seven stories, I feel like seven is the, about the spot. After seven, it it becomes, you know, a a new world of expense. So that's probably where you guys are, you know, make, that's probably the sweet spot for you. Um, you know, is between three and seven. Um, this probably makes sense, at least with the building codes that we have in place today.
Cool. I do just want to note that I I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick to stuff that's U D O relevant, that that Chapel Hills, Chapel Hill has had a lot of visible construction in a couple of places, but Chapel Hill's um organic growth rate of their residential tax base is like one percent, right? It's not relative to Chapel Hill. Chapel Hill has built diddly over the last ten years. It's just because they're bigger. But coming back to this, uh, I I got a really good question, uh, the other day about, um, uh, incentives and particularly because Carboro does not have a favorable, we have a reputation for being a very difficult place to live, uh, to build. I think we we have actually heard from people, I will not build in Carboro again. I would never build in Carboro again. I had a terrible experience. I'm never coming back. Right? We we hear that a fair bit. As we're thinking about rolling out this U D O and saying, look, we are, we are making these changes to be a trustworthy partner where we want you to build these things and we want to make that easy for you. Um, one of the questions that I had heard was, do we have an option of phasing in or offering a, you know, a preset sort of a a sweetener on the, uh, I think the person who who asked this thought that we were doing the the Chapel Hill sort of semi-required. They have sort of a, Chapel Hill's got a weird structure, right, where it pretends to be inclusionary zoning while not actually being inclusionary zoning. It's different from ours. Uh, I think they were assuming we were going the Chapel Hill route, which I'm not sure is the case. But they'd said, well, what if if you, if you want to get to fifteen, what if you said, hey, it's gonna be eight this year and nine next year, and it's gonna go up one percent subsequently? In other words, offer a, offer some kind of extra incentive with an expiration date on it to say, we really want to give you an extra reward for taking the risk of being the first folks to try out this new ordinance. I didn't know if that is something that you have encountered or what your thoughts are on that feedback.
I I I have not, actually. I've never had anybody ask me. Um, the, you know, phones are open, call now. Um, you know, I I I mean, I think that's something that we could explore. I wonder, what what flashed across my mind when you were talking was, how do we express a stance of partnership? And also, at the same time, say, you better come in this year because next year we're gonna, you know, it's gonna be tougher. It's gonna be more expensive. Um, I think that's something to think about. If you guys wanted to have a tiered system where we were, we were kind of on this rolling, sort of, this year it's this and next year it's that and next year it's the other, um, that's certainly something we can do as long as we are all clear that these are voluntary and incentive based because we can't mandate them despite, you know, what anybody says. And that we don't run afoul, and I don't think we would as long as these are voluntary, of of our downzoning provision, which kind of limits what we can, you know, it's very difficult for us to say, well, you know, that was last year's number, this year's number is bigger.
That's what I figured. Did you want to bring that up, though? I wanted to directly address one of the bullet points here. You said, should affordable housing provisions look different for rental versus homeowner units? I don't, I don't think so, except insofar as we might have a higher, we might have a, we may benefit more as a whole from higher levels of affordability for rental than we do for homeowner, right? Because of the extra lift of getting the down payment together for homeowner. But Carrboro is 60% renters right now. And renters are a core part of our community and contribute to the community. So, we want people to have a lot of options, rental and homeowner. And people have all kinds of different reasons for renting versus buying. I don't think that those provisions should look dramatically different unless there's like a price point shift that we need to take into consideration.
And I don't think that there is. And, you know, I mean, I, again, if we structured our standards to recognize owner versus rental, we're, we're in this gray area where maybe we don't want to be.
I don't, I don't think that the, that we want Carrboro to be one of those towns that tries to discriminate against renters.
Right.
That's not our vibe.
Right. Understood. Question about ADUs and short-term rentals?
Merrill, did you have? Okay. Go ahead.
Because I'm trying to be cognizant, it's, I love our time together and believe me, I could spend hours and hours. I'm not sure everybody wants to do that, though. ADUs and short-term rentals. So, very different things. Generally speaking, the input that we've received to this point from the community is that accessory dwelling units should be easier to establish. And I think that we've kind of taken that to heart. Along those lines, and I'm staying with ADUs, is that something that staff could consider? Are there any instances where you would want to limit ADUs to some kind of discretionary permitting process?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right. In recognizing the administrative review process, I know that Carrboro has a time-honored tradition of public involvement that is really, really important. And we need to explore ways to do that creatively. But in its nature, the administrative review and decision process is not a public hearing process. And there's not an opportunity for somebody to come and speak before a group of people in an administrative process. Okay? Okay. Do you guys have, right now, you have some standards that require larger lots for accessory dwelling units. You've got to be 150% out the window.
You've just put your finger on, like, the reason I'm sitting at this table is the moment when I real, like, if you had, if I had to boil it down to one moment, it's the moment when I realized that we required a 50% larger lot for a duplex than for a single-family home of the exact same footprint.
Okay. Should our protection overlay districts be treated differently in terms of this ADU approach?
There's a, there's a number of different protection districts in place right now. And you've given us different advice about different ones. So, we have like, for instance, we have Lloyd Broad district. We have the potential for some other protection districts with some of our other neighborhoods, right? We have our current historic or sort of the Milltown area where you've advised us that since it is not actually a historic district, it needs to come out.
Yes.
Which of those are you thinking about when you're talking about ADUs?
I'm contemplating the Lloyd Broad's, the Rogers Roads, that those areas. Does it, you know, those areas have those standards for a reason. And, you know, I don't, I want to understand the thinking. You know, obviously, this is draft material and we're going to put something on the table and we can talk about adjustments. We're not, you know, we're not getting married to this. But generally speaking, thinking this through, you know, does it merit, you know, if ADUs are reviewed administratively in all of Carrboro or most of Carrboro, are there places where maybe they shouldn't be reviewed administratively? I guess is the, is the question.
Maybe.
Maybe? Good answer. I like that answer.
No, it sounds real indecisive, but... Let's leave it open, can't we just? I would...
I guess the considerations that come to my mind are the purpose of, I think, overlays in conservation districts in places like Lloyd Broad and Rogers Road is to prevent capital from displacing under-resourced current owners.
Yes.
What occurs to me as possible, I'm curious what you think about this, is that one of the reasons the ADU relaxation is so broadly popular is because this is a pretty rare instance where a development deregulation can accrue to pretty small property owners pretty quickly. Which, which is, which is to say that it strikes me as potentially pretty equitable to also have ADUs be much easier in these conservation and overlay districts. This is not like something I'm interested in advancing tonight. We're going to have to talk about it and talk to some community folks about it, for sure.
For sure.
But I'm just, I just wonder what you think about the reasoning there or whether that sounds specious to you.
No, I think you're absolutely right. My, I am plagued by a feeling about ADUs. And here it is. The lending rates on an ADU are 8%, 10%. And we have seen numerous local governments soften the ADU standards. And have we seen the floodgates open and there's ADUs everywhere? And the answer is no, we haven't. And is that reason because people don't have the space on their lot? Probably not. Is that reason that people don't want that extra revenue stream? Probably not. We think the reason is because the financing structure of these things is such that I don't have $100,000 to borrow to build an accessory dwelling unit. If I did, I wouldn't need an accessory dwelling unit. And so, I think it behooves us to simplify the accessory dwelling unit process, to make that more open and easier to establish. I also don't think that we should be under any illusion that this is going to solve our problem. I really don't think that it will. There are lots and lots of resort communities. This is not the answer at all because those aren't going to become affordable units. They're going to become vacation rentals. There are plenty of people who, in other college towns, not Carrboro, who see the ADU as a student rental machine. Whether or not that's the case in Carrboro, I don't know. But I think they're part of the strategy, just like making missing-middle housing easier, just like some of the other things that we're suggesting. Exploring are part of the solution. I think this does make sense. I think you should do it. Is it going to solve the problem? I don't think so. And it's not because your rules are off. They're a little off, but that's not why it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked because they're too expensive, in my opinion.
Well, a really great answer. Thank you.
What about short-term rentals?
That, I think that ties in perfectly with this because the question that I have on should there be a difference in overlays is, is there a unique displacement risk? Which is, like, I think that to the extent that exists, the unique displacement risk is people coming in and creating short-term rentals in these communities and driving people out. And do we have a mechanism in this UDO to prevent that?
I do not have enough experience with anti-displacement standards to be able to answer that question. They, in many ways, feel extra regulatory in nature to me, that an anti-displacement strategy probably makes sense, is probably a good idea and is perhaps not necessarily woven into the fabric of your development regulations, but is accomplished in some other ways. And, and I am a student of this. This is, there's, there's no, you know, when you look at other places that utilize these tools, almost none of them do it in a regulatory way. There's a rent control provision. There's, you know, an inability to sell property, which starts to feel problematic in terms of due process.
And we can't do rent control in North Carolina.
No. No, we can't.
Not yet.
Not yet. You know, but, but the point you make is a very good one. Those areas that, that have high potential value relative to current assembly cost, that's where the action's going to be. That's where the action's going to be because that's the biggest profit increment. And, you know, that's why people have the anti-displacement provisions. The anti-displacement provisions are a source of concern for me, not because I, you know, that I'm worried about their function. I don't understand them well enough. And the ones that I've seen generally aren't in the development rules. They're, they're done outside of the development regulation. And I'm, I mean, I'm open to talking about this and going down the road, but this is...
It strikes me that it would largely take the place of subsidy, right? Or take the form of subsidy?
Mm-hmm.
So, we've talked about a little bit, like, this idea.
Can you, can you get closer to the mic so I can...
Yeah, so, we've like bandied about like a hypothetical policy, say wherein I want to build, you know, I, I own, or I want to buy a single-family home in Lloyd Broad. I want to build four units there. There is some metric or lever by which, say I build four doors, whatever form, there's some incentive for me to give like a right of first refusal to the original homeowner or like a discounted rate to the original homeowner. Because one of the things that I think about with anti-displacement measures is, what we want, we don't want to, we don't want to be excluding folks from accessing the value of their, like, appreciating housing asset. And many long-term homeowners are underneath that value. They're, they're not in a position to liquidate and like receive the benefit and so they see the tax burden, but they can't. And so, in theory, it is possible to have humane development incentives that would allow folks to access this capital that they've accrued, but also stay where they live. But I think that there's nothing that we would do in the UDO for that. I think that that's like a lending program, essentially. Is that, do I have that about right?
You absolutely do. I don't know of a development standard that would require you to offer a first right of refusal or that would, you know, let, a lot of these kind of anti-displacement rules make all of this kind of expansion of development potential provision available, except in those, in the areas where, that are, that have been traditionally under-invested. And it's in the name of anti-displacement that that's done. And I just scratched my head about that. I don't know, I'm sure somebody's figured it out. I'm not the one who has. I just don't know. It seems to me that tracking that kind of stuff would become very difficult and potentially legally fraught, you know?
Through the ordinance, you mean, or just generally?
Yeah, through the UDO, through the UDO. Not, not, you know, as a, as a town, you know, protocol or a policy, but through your development regulation under 160D, I have concern about that.
It sounds like we have other work to do. And I really appreciate that answer. Thank you for that.
I wish I had a better one because it's a real issue, but I just don't, I don't see how the development regulations can help us solve that problem without being so over, so heavy-handed that we've gone too far. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, yeah.
Heard.
Okay. A couple of minutes about the procedural changes. I just want to summarize. Unless there's other questions about affordable.
Any other questions? No?
Okay. There's some very low-hanging fruit about your review process that we wanted to suggest be changed, and I'm just going to summarize it. And this is information that we've covered, but I want to just mention it one more time. We believe that there should be one body that hears special use permits, not two. And that body should probably be this body. We do not think there should be advisory review on a quasi-judicial matter. Y'all, the decision-maker shouldn't be swayed by evidence and testimony that's provided outside of the hearing where a decision is made. And advisory bodies, their sole purpose is to provide, you know, information for you to use in your decision-making processes. Very legally fraught, we suggest that not happen. Okay? So, this would simplify your special use permit process. There's one review body, not, not two different kinds and no advisory in the process. We would like to suggest generally that where we can and where that makes sense, we add standards to the UDO that allow us to reduce the range of non-residential uses that require special use permits. Remember, I said non-residential uses, I'll come to that in a minute. So, you know, one of the symptoms of development codes that have a heavy reliance on special use permits is they don't have sufficient standards. And it's necessary for them to have this discretionary consideration because there's not clear enough rules on the books that people are comfortable that compatibility and harmony is going to be protected. Okay? I do suggest that we carry forward the special use permit requirements for residential uses unless affordable housing is provided, in which case that residential development be reviewed and decided administratively, which is an incentive that is not density. It's a procedural incentive. It also squares nicely with the downzoning bill because you're already doing this for the most part. Okay? Okay. One of the questions that has come up and that I want to be sure that I mention and discuss here is, you know, we've talked about the special use permit, the quasi-judicial nature, and I know that you guys have a lot of conditional zoning and we have lots of room to maneuver in terms of affordable housing and, and, you know, inducements to take advantage, inducements to provide it. The question on the table is, how are we getting affordable housing provision from site plans and subdivisions, right? How's that happening? I think maybe in the past, there have been some text amendments that have been proposed to create processes where these otherwise administrative functions can incorporate affordable housing. We do not think reliance on text amendments is a great solution. What we would suggest is incentives in the form of, you know, sustainability incentives or just incentives that include affordable housing. And that if you do affordable housing, that you, you know, you, you receive some kind of incentive. And this is where your earlier point about warring incentives really comes into play. How do we make sure that our, one incentive don't cut against our other incentives? We might decide that the site plan or subdivision standard, that the site plan subdivision procedures aren't eligible for some of our other quote-unquote "green" infrastructure incentives, if that makes some sense. We are favoring and leaning into affordable housing. And I don't have all the mechanics in that squared away yet, but I wanted to be sure that this was on the table, that you understood that there may need to be some balancing between the groups of incentives that we use, particularly as it pertains to site plans and subdivisions.
I think one bit of guidance I think we'd probably share, I think, if I take a stab at this, is like, we want it all, but failing all of it all the time in perfect harmony, I think affordability at the top of our incentive pyramid. Then I think, like, climate features, which here I make a distinction as opposed to like sort of like climate resilient amenities. So, like, I, like, I, I can, like, under some duress, I can talk about like bike pad and sidewalk for affordability. But we can't... bike pad and sidewalk for affordability. But we can't talk about like stormwater and canopy, I think. Does that make sense? You know, am I, I, I don't, I, I, you know, this is not like a distinction I relish making. I just think that, like, we kind of have to weight these things in order to, you know, like, if, if we incentivize everything, we're not going to be incentivizing affordability.
Right.
We can't, we can't simultaneously incentivize, like, what I'll refer to as climate amenity infrastructure and affordability, though I would really like to. Does, does that square with the rest of y'all's thinking? I mean, I just tossed that out to sort of clarify for Chad, because I bet we're pretty close to aligned, but it does also kind of suck.
There was a, I was chewing over some of the, some of the, since you brought up bike pad amenities. And, and I see that Councilmember Posada Rosca's got his hand up, just to call that out, Madam Mayor. The, uh... Outside of our, outside of our central or downtown district, there are a lot of, there are a lot of districts right now where we often don't have sidewalks, where we need to add bike pad. That basic bike pad infrastructure is missing, and it needs to come in. But there are also, if we're, if we're thinking about, I'm thinking about particularly about site division, site plan subdivision grade stuff, where I was wondering what y'all think. What if we switched to prioritizing the sort of greenway multi-use path mode over the sidewalk mode? For the, the less, you know, it's sort of less dense, less, less deeply urban areas? Because there's, like, I'm thinking about 86. We can spend the next 30 years trying to piece together a sidewalk along there, but it's probably a lot easier to get a multi-use path that flows through all of those and picks up and connects into Greenway Network. And, and then coming back to your point, Danny, I think I'm, I would also, I don't like to, but I think that's one of the things, like, I would not give up on adequate stormwater and adequate shade. But a lot of other things, like, if it...
Where we have to barter.
Where we have to barter.
You know, I hear the point about Greenway. I'm, I'm torn on this one. I, I think, you know, sidewalks are a little bit more democratically accessible. You know, like a greenway often has the function, and I'm not necessarily opposed to this, because I, I don't want to let, like, the values abstract, like, the de facto benefit. But like, you know, for instance, the greenways through the northern neighborhoods right now that rock, like, are really beautiful and connect a lot of things, are pretty unknown, except to, like, longtime experienced cyclists and people in the neighborhoods. Whereas a sidewalk is right there. It's like, you know, if you can see the school, you can see the sidewalk. You can, you know, and then I also hear, and this, I think, is like, not necessarily something I share, but as a big community, like, one of the things that you often hear is a sidewalk feels a little safer than a greenway. Greenways are dark, after dark, you know, the, like, you know, there's a lot of places, people in my life who don't always feel as safe as I feel in the world, won't be on, in our Greenway Network, but, you know, don't feel that same way walking down North Greensboro. So I, I don't need, I don't mean to...
I think this may be more a function of location than it is, yeah. I think the reason I'm thinking about this is because of the sheer cost per linear foot of sidewalk compared to multi-use path.
I, I mean...
If we're thinking about what transportation looks like around the town in the future, if we're thinking about micro-mobility, right, then...
I think the multi-use path is more desirable, is like reducing VMTs, and like, I, I do.
That's really what I'm getting at.
But I wonder, I, I just frankly do not, I, I appreciate it if y'all noodled on it a little bit, so we could keep discussing. Just because I, I just don't, like, as I, this, the first time I thought of it was when Chad brought it up in our last session. And I was like, hell yeah, VMTs, like, hate them, multimodal paths, love them. Started thinking about it, you know, bounced it off my wife, bounced it off a couple other people. I love greenways. I use them all the time. I just wonder if they're a little bit less inclusive, in fact. I don't know. That, that may, like I say, I don't want the, sort of the values here, but like, the sidewalk is a great triumph of society. Sidewalks and sewers.
Let's go to Councilmember Posada. I'll come back to you, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was thinking about this question, and, and just wanted to kind of be a little clearer on my end, right? So I do think that stormwater and canopy, I'm, I'm on board with that being mandated, but I'm also, I want to incentivize affordability more than anything else. And I can see very few instances where, if the decision is between amenities versus affordability, I'm going to go with affordability 100% of the time. So I just want to be clear that I do, I do think we need to find ways of, you know, being climate resilient, and, and I fully acknowledge that there's a lot of really great benefits to what folks are, we're talking about right now, but I'm, I just want to make sure that everybody on the dais knows where I stand. Like, I want to incentivize affordability 100% of the time. And if, and, and I'm happy that, you know, that other things are added to that, but if it comes down to a decision between affordability and anything else, I wouldn't be strong on, on the affordability side, because that's where I see the most need. And when I talk to community, you know, when I talk to folks, that's where I see the most need. And I just, so kind of Chad, to where, what I would want to look at is, yeah, if there's ways of incentivizing some of these, you know, like, environmental protect, amenities is great. I'm happy to do that. But not at the cost even of putting the two up for a fight and, or a debate in front of the council.
Right.
Does that make any sense?
It does. It totally does. I totally understand.
And I think we've been hearing that tonight already, and thank you for that, Councilmember Posada Rosca. Councilmember Haven O'Donnell.
Yeah. And with that, and thank you for that, Eliezer, I think, you know, we have twin pillars, and one is equity, and the other is our, our climate resilience and sustainability. And what may be an incentive in affordability to reduce down something as an adaptive response to climate in the short run may look valuable, but in the long run, it may end up being harmful. And I, I can't caution you anymore to say that the, the adaptations that we're going to need to address are unknown. And putting affordability in the short run with developers ahead of holding the sustainability and resilience goals is probably unsound. Historically, that's what ends up happening. That's what put us in this climate situation to begin with, that, that the, the sound science was always put aside to be able to develop. I understand the interest in development. I understand the interest in creating a scale of, of affordability that can be, can meet many, many needs in, in Carrboro and in, in our area. But if we are willing to put something ahead of the climate and the, let's not even use the word climate. Let's use, let's use severe weather, because at the state level, that's how we talked about it, severe weather, and severe temperatures. You know, we just, we just may be putting more people in harm's way over the longer course. So I would just say, be careful what you ask for, because eliminating those, or rather incentivizing the reduction or the lessening of certain green infrastructure, or, or, or green ways to protect our community and give us stronger resilience, in the long run, will end up hurting us. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell. Comments? Questions? Other? Chad?
That, that's, thank you. That's everything that, that we have. We look forward to moving from the theoretical into the, the real. And so the next step for us is delivery of the code diagnosis base that includes these, these, you know, eight key themes modified based on our conversations and your guidance. That goes to staff for review. We will go over it with staff, and then it'll be sent to you guys, and then I will be back. And we will go over that.
Do you have a timeframe for that, Chad?
I think we'll probably want at least six weeks. Yeah. Staff needs time, and, and you'll need some time to, to review this. But this will be the blueprint for the UDO. It will be very much what we suggest be done.
Madam Mayor, if I, I have one question for you, Chad, which I would ask you probably not to answer tonight, but to take away. It's about the table of uses. And it is about whether or not, as we're thinking about the downzoning law, we're thinking about the ability to remove uses, as we're thinking about how we distinguish uses from each other, whether or not we have a use that currently would include data centers.
I, I'm, I will happily answer that question now or later. You just tell me what you want to do. I do not think you have a use that, that qualifies as a data center. I think that you should absolutely, positively only permit data centers via conditional rezoning. I think that you should require a community benefit agreement for those. And we are working now on a variety of limitations for those use types here in North Carolina, in a handful of communities, which we're happy to share with you when, if and when you're ready to see them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm ready to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Everybody's waiting for it. It has been moved improperly seconded that we adjourn this work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We're adjourned.